Six o'clock, I'll call the November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. We'll be in addition to the agenda. I will be adding the closed session under two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A-one, Personnel Matters, to the end of the agenda. Tonight, we have Reverend John Langham from the Withfield Presbyterian Church to provide an invocation. If you would please stand or remain standing for the pleasure of the lead.
Approach the mic.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Let's pray together. Gracious God, we gather here tonight and we, first of all, in this season, give you thanks. Thanks for all the blessings we have and the ways that you provide and protect. And we just thank you for the opportunity to gather tonight. And we recognize as leaders in this community and in the county and the different communities, you've called this group to lead. It also means you've called us to serve. And we pray, God, that the decisions that are made tonight, we pray for wisdom, pray for guidance, pray that your agenda, your will, would be fulfilled and that you would be honored in the things that are done here. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
We have one citizen signed up to speak, Ms. Myers.
Yes, gentlemen, you're having a meeting next week with the school board. I was wondering if that was open to the public and will it be here?
It is here.
It is here.
All our meetings are open to the public.
Okay. In regard to that, I was wondering if you had seen my letter that I sent to the newspaper concerning...
If you'll just give it to Mr. Bear, Ms. Myers.
Here it goes. And so on. I wish you to address that with them. We've been going around in circles since August about these porn books that are in our public school system. And I've done everything that they've asked me to do. Every time I go back to them, they want more forms, they want it to go to all over the place. So anyway, I've done that and so on, but we need some, not more direction, but we need this acted upon to get these books out of our public school system. So I'd appreciate if you put that on your agenda for the board, your joint meeting next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. That's the only person we had signed up, so I'll close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for supervisors, district, and voting precinct ordinance. I'll read the public hearing notice in compliance with the Code of Virginia of nineteen-fifty and amendments thereto. The With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing to consider reenactment of the ordinance titled Supervisors, District, and Voting Precinct Ordinance of With County, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors shall hear comments from citizens concerning the reenactment of this ordinance. The reenactment of this ordinance will not change the existing supervisor districts, but updates the ordinance in accordance with the latest census. Public hearing will be held Tuesday, November the twenty-third at six-oh-five P.M. in the boardroom of the With County Administration Building, three-forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. A copy of the proposed reenacted ordinance may be found online at www.withco.org or at the County Administrator's Office, three-forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, for public review. Mr. Bear, do you want to proffer the amendment?
Certainly be glad to. I appreciate County Attorney Farthing's assistance with drafting this. As we have discussed, following the last census, we did have an overall decrease in population, but all of our districts stayed within the plus or minus five percent range of an ideal district population. Therefore, a proposal that is presented tonight for you all for consideration for this public hearing is to create the supervisors' districts for the next decade, following the same lines that they are currently following. This will also assist us when we finally get the district and/or the House of Delegates and Senate seats drawn out. They will be drawn based on the last lines as it is, so therefore, this should eliminate us having any type of a split precinct for the next ten years.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. We do have one citizen signed up to speak for the public hearing, Ms. Myers.
Yes, I'd like you to hold off on this, gentlemen. As you know, I'm a poll watcher and I'm there and I speak to a lot of people. And this just happened to come from meeting with people. We have some peripheries in our districts. There's some friends of mine that live over on Cedar Springs Road. Their house number is fourteen forty-four. They're less than two miles from the Row Retreat Community Center, but they have to go to Speedway to vote. And the people across, directly across the street from them, vote at the community center. And then we have people that live, in fact, it's the last house, the Moore family, before the, in Cripple Creek, at the end, just before the National Forest, they have to go to Sheffy to vote. And so people in that enclave. We don't want to disenfranchise everybody. We'd like to make it as accessible as possible, but for somebody to go twenty miles in the other direction, all over the countryside, to vote where they could just zip over as they normally do, to Speedway and vote. So we need people to look at addresses and actually find out where some of these people are going and make it easier for them. The people on Cedar Springs Road, the people at the other end of Cripple Creek, and so on. So if you could bring this up with Lennon Counts or if there's a committee or whatever, to do some door knocking, because I'm sure there are people that did not see, don't get the newspaper, didn't see this in the newspaper and have no knowledge that they could perhaps change their voting district just to make it more accessible to them, closer and so on and so forth. So I would hope you would, could address that in the future and make sure that everybody can get out and vote easily. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. That's the only person we had signed up for the public hearing, so I'll close citizens' time. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Bear?
No, not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody else have any comments on the proposed change?
I only have a question. Is this the current wordage?
Yes.
Okay. Because I thought, for some reason, I thought the Speedway district had gotten moved closer into Ivanode and didn't stop at that power line anymore, but this is...
The only thing that changed in that ordinance was the numbers from the census, how many people were registered.
And what we proposed was a public hearing tonight, and then we'll put this on the agenda for the upcoming meeting for action.
All right, moving on. Excuse me. Agenda, the next item is the payment of invoices. You've each received a copy of the invoices in the board package. I'll entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any invoice that any board member wants to pull out and discuss? Hearing now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is the minutes of our previous meeting from November the ninth, twenty-twenty-one. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. McRoberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any corrections to the minutes as presented? Hearing now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is old business, the enterprise zone resolution. Mr. Bear, I believe it's...
Yes, you all had the public hearing at the last meeting. Mr. Matthews came and presented the proposed changes. This is the resolution for you all to adopt if you want to go ahead and proceed with those proposed changes to enterprise zone.
Have Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-five, the enterprise zone application. Open the floor for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion about the ordinance as presented? Hearing now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is the Lead Mines Rescue Squad Rock Boat. Mr. Hankins, I believe this is yours?
It is. And I'll expect a gold star, Mr. Chairman, because this is probably the shortest memo I've ever written.
I did notice that.
The board agreed at this last meeting to fund the rock boat. This is the appropriation and amendment of the budget for that. It does reflect that there's a fourteen thousand dollar contribution due from Lead Mines, which has received those, and will write us a check for that amount.
So we need to amend and appropriate...
Yes, sir. If you'll adopt the resolution amending the current budget in the amount of fifty thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars, shows both the revenue and expenditure side in that resolution.
Open the floor up for motion to adopt the resolution to amend the budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Mr. McRoberts.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? One thing, Mr. Hankins, and I can't remember where I seen it, but did I read that we need to extend the thank you, Mr. Toplin?
He has actually helped us to cut a little bit off the boat's cost and allow us to get a couple of options that they wouldn't have otherwise. He was able to find a motor, which is apparently a hard thing to do these days. I did notice a typo as well in the resolution. Today is November twenty-third, not the twenty-second. I've got the wrong date in there, but we'll adjust that typographically. But yes, I thought a thank you, Mr. Toplin, would be appropriate for his assistance.
If you'll prepare something, I can sign over to Steve and we'll send you the thank you later. Any more questions or discussion? Do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Moving on to reports, we have the treasurer's report.
She sent me a message that she may be a little bit late. I guess they may still be taking some payments, so...
Sheriff, I seen you walk in while we're on reports. Do you have anything? I'll take it up for Sheriff. He was in the same line at the funeral home as I was.
You'd been about five minutes late if you'd stayed with him. I just had one thing I wanted to mention. Upon the retirement of Sheriff Dunagan under Virginia code, if officer leaves in good standing, they can purchase her service weapon for a dollar. I was going to see if we could declare his service weapon surplus and allow the department to purchase that.
Do we just do that as far as a motion or...
Dip in and pass the done as a motion to...
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
I've already got it. I was excited to see that.
I really never been through that before, but we do have the payment in there. Lot of strange was activity on my part trying to gain that, but we got it.
I appreciate you bringing that up. I had forgotten about that, but that has been traditional to the past, so thank you.
And also, members of our department had a, a lot of ladies got together, wanted to have what to call a Croctober Fest, and they judged these different dishes. And when we did that, we had done a fund down there. We all decided we'd like to do that in memory of Logan, and we wanted to take the proceeds of that and donate it to that scholarship fund that we had at the office.
And that's all written in, Mr. Chairman. I should only do some... Mr. Bear, get your receipt here.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right, we move into new business. We have the consent calendar. Everybody received a copy of that in their package. Make a motion to approve as presented. Have a motion by Mr. Horne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is DSS, Ms. Myers.
Good. Yesterday, as many of you know, I had the pleasure of attending the groundbreaking for Blue Star, and that was such an amazing event. I'm excited to see the pictures of the golden shovel in Mr. Bott's home at some point. But from the DSS perspective, the workforce development opportunities for our citizens is just amazing and really excited to watch this project move forward. As a board, I know you've talked about the housing development opportunities that is being worked upon, but I encourage you to think about the childcare needs for our community in ways that perhaps the local government can encourage businesses to grow the capacity for additional childcare in our locality. That is one of those areas that I don't know the locality that truly has the capacity for all the childcare needs in their area. If I can help in any way with that, please let me know. Just wanted to share a couple of things. We have forty-one children in foster care at present, and November is National Adoption Month. And I'm pleased to share that we've had nine adoptions this year, and we have two that are pending. And that is really exciting for us, and I just wanted to share that information. Next year, December first, or next week, sorry, December first, marks my twenty-seventh year serving the Commonwealth. I began my career as a Child Protective Services worker here for With County. And back in my day, we had our share of tough stuff. A lot of it was all along the lines of dirty houses, unsupervised children, bruises here and there. In today's world, unfortunately, it is more commonplace to see cases that are, that include those components, but that are much more complex, riddled with substance abuse and that are multi-generational in nature. And Ms. Ferguson can share, we long for the days of a simple, dirty house. But even a dirty house is not just a dirty house. There's generally lots of issues that, you know, were going on in that family that led to things getting to the point of our involvement. So tonight, I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Louise Ferguson to share a little bit about what the last quarter has been like for Child Protective Services and Prevention Services. And just kind of for context, as she comes forward, for state fiscal year, we had six-hundred-and-thirty-one children involved in Child Protective Service reports, just for our locality. And again, we're going to talk a little bit about just the last quarter and some of the things that are going on. Ms. Ferguson is a new supervisor to our agency. She is not new to the agency, nor is she new to With County, but this is a new role for her, and I am very pleased that this will be her first opportunity to speak to the board supervisors. She's so excited. She's turning it in. She's so excited.
Okay. So we wanted to just pick a timeline to talk about, because when you try to look at our numbers for an entire year, it's overwhelming. It's overwhelming for us, and I know when you start throwing numbers out at people, it's overwhelming for everybody. So we picked just a random couple of months, August first of this year until the last day of October. During that time, which is about ninety days, we had fifty-seven valid referrals. That means that someone called a report in, and fifty-seven of those were valid per Virginia code. Of those fifty-seven, this would probably help, sixteen of those were investigations, forty-one of those were assessments. When we have investigations, they are typically your more serious cases, sex abuse, physical abuse, and some neglect cases. We have a lot more assessments, thank goodness. Assessments are exactly what it says. You assess the situation, help the family get services, to fix whatever the situation is. Of those fifty-seven referrals, we ask law enforcement for help on eighteen of those referrals. That resulted in seven criminal charges for those referrals, and that may have been more charges. It was just out of those fifty-seven referrals, seven of those included some charges. Hope that makes sense. Of those fifty-seven referrals, we had one child come into foster care. We had eleven children who were placed with family members. Of those fifty-seven referrals, there were two who were non-residents, and I believe in this timeline, both of those referrals were folks who were traveling and were on the interstate. This was a number that was interesting to me. I'd never thought about this. You see it when you have cases, but then when you put it together and put a number on it, it means something a little different. Of those fifty-seven referrals, there were at least eight parents who were homeless. You think fifty-seven families, you had eight parents homeless. That's a pretty good number for this area. And when I say homeless, I mean they were either living in a motel with Hope helping them, or they were having to stay with family because they had nowhere else to go, or some other arrangement. We made nineteen mental health referrals. We made eighteen substance abuse referrals, with the majority of those being for methamphetamine. We had four substance-exposed infants. That number comes and goes. We could probably do the same three-month timeline for a different time of the year and have more or less. Our hospital is wonderful. A lot of the other localities around us don't have the advantage we do. Our hospital, if an infant hits that score at a two, three, whatever they're calling us. And we like that because we like to get our feet in the door and be able to talk, especially to young parents. Gives us an opportunity to talk to them about safe sleep and all kinds of other things. Of those four substance-exposed infants in this time period, two, the mom was positive for methamphetamine, and two for marijuana. Then we have, oh, let me tell you a little bit about our CPS team, and that'll make the next things, make a little more sense. We have seven workers. Three are full-time investigators, four are in-home workers, and then myself. I make eight. With the in-home program, we, when you have a family, some families need to be open. Forty-five days is just not enough time with us for us to make a change, get referrals started, get things happening, and make some real change. So we have a couple of different things we can do. We can open them to ongoing, which is a little more invasive, means we're going to probably be at their house a couple of times a month and get to know them real well. And then you have family support, where sometimes all a family needs is just someone helping them make those phone calls to get counseling started or some other service. They don't need us at their dinner table. Then we also have those same folks doing supervised visits. These supervised visits are not the same as foster care's supervised visits with parents. From a CPS standpoint, a lot of times, the judge will order that a parent be supervised by us, depending on the situation. If it's a domestic violence situation where no one in the family will step up to supervise, he'll have us do that for a few months until things calm down. A lot of times, they go back to court and we get relieved from that. But we have seven of those right now. We have eighteen family support cases and thirteen ongoing cases. And then that brings us to on-call. This is the first time. I've worked at the agency for fifteen years, and I can't remember a time that we had this many people available to work on-call who are all trained, can go out and do anything. But there's eleven workers who rotate that. We have two workers on-call anytime we're not at work, and we have one supervisor on-call. So I'm really proud of the fact we have that many people trained, because that's never happened. We've always just had a few. So that's really good. And we're really busy with that, as you can imagine. Sometimes it's abuse and neglect situations. Recently, we've had several situations with runaways and things that have happened on the interstate, which might not have been abuse and neglect for us, but law enforcement needed assistance, and we all worked together as a team. So we had some workers who sat up with a teenager a couple of weeks ago all night until parents could drive from several states over, because he decided to take a joyride. Anybody that's raised teenagers knows that's possible. Well, that's the spiel. Any questions? Told you it was going to be a whole lot of numbers.
Thank you for a job well done. It's exciting to hear that you all have that many trained.
It is, isn't it?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Lots of hard work.
Have Kim talk to you in the morning.
Kim, Volontal?
Volontal. Well...
I will say, as Louise echoed, the number of trained staff that we have right now is probably the best we've had in a really long time. And Sheriff, Sheriff Foster is here, and Officer Bott, Mr. Bott, have the sheriff, it doesn't matter who gets called at the office, somebody's coming, someone's going to handle that situation, and they're going to handle the way that we have to handle. And that hasn't always been the way it's been in our office, between turnover and leadership and just seeing different dynamics. And I'm very pleased that we all are there. We, as women, we have a wonderful relationship with the hospital. We have a wonderful relationship with the school system, and with law enforcement. We couldn't do it if we didn't, and we have this effect, but if we didn't have the systems between the sheriff's office, the county, and the district, we call somebody to help us, and they call us to help them. And it takes all of us working together to work with our wonderful chairs and board of supervisors.
Well, I will say, and I've said it before, sitting on the DSS board has made me glad I chose law enforcement instead of the social work. And I don't know these dirty houses you're talking about, because I have yet to see one of those cases. As I've said before, people will be shocked if we can share the details of some of the stuff that your workers have experienced.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Quinn?
I knew that was coming.
Come on up.
My apologies.
You haven't been busy, have you?
We've been busy, but we've had system issues. Today was day two, and IT finally was able to get us operational today. Yesterday, we learned how to write paper receipts to everybody again. So it's been an interesting two days. We're busy. This week really picked up, and of course, next week will as well, but we've had a lot of other things going on that's kind of sent us all into orbit, so to speak. So it's been, been interesting, so... But tomorrow's a half-day, and we're looking forward to it. Okay. Well, hello, everybody. Again, sorry I'm late. You have your October financial reports in your board packet. For the month ending of October, the consolidated account contained a balance of sixty-three million, three hundred fifty thousand, forty-nine dollars, and included within that balance is the general fund balance of thirty-nine million, forty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So that's kind of really all I have is, honestly, haven't had time to go through the report and look at everything in detail, so I apologize, but if you have a question, I'll do my best to answer.
Do you have anything for Ms. Quinn?
I do not.
Ms. Quinn, just while you're, I know you're working probably some late hours next week and losing watch of the video.
Yes, yes. Next week, starting Monday, Monday through Friday of next week, we are open until six. So our office hours will be eight-thirty to six. Next Saturday, December the fourth, we are open eight-thirty to twelve noon. And Monday, December sixth, which is the due date, we're open eight-thirty to six that day as well.
So you're open to six on the due date?
Yes.
Because you know that's when I pay money.
Five-fifty-nine. Payment box.
Try.
I have a camera. I have a camera on that box. I'm going to know if you drop it in at six-oh-one, you're done. And his face turned red on that one.
Hey, I admit it. I like to hold on to my money as long as possible.
Hey, I don't blame you. Last few days have been interesting. Of course, everybody's kind of all over the place because some, you know, some things we take a little bit easier than we do other things. So you kind of get different ends of the spectrum of folks coming in and how they feel about, about taxes. But the change in personal property values has kind of been a sticky topic this time because trucks and the larger SUVs, some mid-sized SUVs, the values increased. So some people did see their personal property bills increase because of that instead of it decreasing as it normally does. And then because reassessment is occurring, some folks are under the impression that the real estate assessment's already gone into effect. So, you know, you kind of, kind of explain that, but next year will be a new year and it's always fun after reassessment.
So what's the best time of day to come through and get that took care of?
Pay taxes. Right now, we kind of, we die down about four o'clock from four on. But next week, between five and six, you'll be able to just walk right in and walk right out.
Or if you're like me, you walk in with them.
Or Saturday morning.
Sit in line and you use Dropbox.
See, I'm going to use my credit card so I get some dollar points.
I agree. I agree with Roland.
But yeah, it seems like by about nine-thirty, ten o'clock, we really pick up and it'll stay steady till close to noon. Drop off for just a very short period of time, then a lot of folks, I think, are on their lunch breaks. So they're, they're coming over to the courthouse. And we're usually pretty busy till about two, three o'clock. And it'll sort of start dying down a little bit, but four to six next week or even next Saturday, you won't have to wait in line. If you do, there may only be two people in front of you at the most, but usually it kind of dies down pretty good. But we're, of course, these two days have put us a little further behind on mail. We were about, not quite, two weeks out. Of course, that included holidays and weekends. So that put us at the two weeks. But now we've got the extra two days added to that, but hope to get back on that, at least the half-day tomorrow and pick up next week. So it's not like it was last year and we're six weeks behind. So we've got a better handle on that this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll have one.
I was just going to say, she was talking about different people having different opinions. If you find somebody that likes to pay taxes, I want to know who they are.
The folks that have moved down here from up north are very appreciative of our tax rates.
They still don't like paying taxes though. They just like the tax rate.
And if you know Ed Shack in Royal Retreat, Ed always comes in and expresses his gratefulness for getting to pay taxes and what our rates are. I mean, Ed always says something, but the Shacks are very, very grateful people and they're not going to complain about anything, so, which we could all take a lesson from in the end.
Stephen, did you have something?
Ms. Gwynn and I met last week. You talked about credit cards. We met last week. We talked about the credit card, talked about the fees, talked about the structure. Still gathering some information. To come back at your, probably your first meeting in December, that I still want to say the night meeting in December, but the first meeting in December and discuss the options of a, of a flat fee and what that flat fee should be based on the historical data she has or if it's absorbing the fee in the process.
And one thing I will say, I want to clarify, I was reading through the minutes very quickly yesterday evening and, and I think it's the way I had worded. I knew what I was referring to, but I don't know that I made that clear. Right now, when we process payments and the company that processes those payments for us, I had mentioned that phone payments were, would, I think the way the minutes read it stated to the effect that phone payments would be a higher rate than an in-person payment. That's not the case going forward. That's how it is now. Because you have more liability with a phone payment because you don't physically have that card in front of you to insert into the chip reader. So any payment that's put in that is a phone payment, when the company is processing that for us right now, the bank is absorbing a higher cost to process that card than they are, unlike Mr. Cook, you were talking about coming in and paying with your card. You come in in person and pay, the bank's absorbing a lower fee compared to Ms. Lawson if she calls and pays over the phone. So that's the difference in that and I hope I clarified that a little bit more because after I read back through, I was like, okay, that, that doesn't sound right. But I'm sure that's what I'd said because I knew what I was talking about. I just didn't relay it to you guys and lady, as I should have. But that's how that is and you do have higher liability because of phone payments. But it's a booming business because it is a convenience for people to be able to call. Yeah, we're still working on that. Mr. Bayer and Ms. Williams are going to meet, I think, with the current provider and as soon as we can get through the holiday schedule this week and get a few things worked out and try to see what we need to do or maybe look at another, another company. But we're still in the progress on that or in the process, I mean. I don't know what my words are tonight. Anybody have anything? And I'll quit rambling.
Anybody else have anything for Ms. Gwynn?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, thanks, Lord.
Going back to due business, the next item is Mount Rogers Health District Local Government Agreement.
This is the agreement we end up signing, executing every year. I went ahead and put it in the agenda. If you all would like the Health Department to come and make a presentation, they certainly can. If you do make a motion to approve this agreement tonight, I would ask that paragraph number one, instead of saying three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty, what was actually approved in our budget is three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty. Just a, it's a five-hundred-dollar difference, but just, other than that, and that to me is, is the, one of the main gist of this agreement is just indicating our local contribution that we're making.
Entertaining a motion to approve the agreement in the amount of three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, three-eighty. Three-eighty?
Same.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any question or discussion? Mr. Bayer, does this take into account the rent? Is it listed or?
Rent is not in that, but we do. And we just got the letter, I think, last week of the annual CPI increase on the rent payment that comes from that building over there. That is under a separate agreement.
And do you know, do we actually have a director for our health district or we still sharing one with?
To my knowledge, we are still sharing it this time.
Does anybody else have any questions? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Uh.
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 So approved. Anything else under old biz, or new business, Mr. Bayer?
I have one handout that was not on the agenda that I've given to you all. In order to move forward with this, you have a promissory note in front of you. The individual that account number one-oh-one, three-ninety-six dash zero-zero have been a non-users of water and sewer system. Were up to date, and they had some late stuff in there, but they were generally up to date around two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, at which time they ceased payment on, on their bill. They came in this past week or interested in actually connecting to the water and sewer. They were willing to pay the full amount of the outstanding charges associated with the account for the actual water. They asked for a break on the penalty and interest and they said that they would definitely connect to the system. What is proposed, and they have made that payment for the water and sewer already, what is proposed is a promissory note of a hundred dollars a month for the next twelve months. And as long as they stay current on their water and sewer and on this promissory note, then the rest of the outstanding penalty and interest that they had accrued would be waived. So I would request approval for staff to approve this promissory note with this account.
Entertaining a motion to approve the promissory notice presented.
Same.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Horne. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Uh.
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 Yep.
Uh.
Uh.
So approved. Also, Ms. Sweeney gave us a resolution for a grant that she's working on. I guess with Royal Retreat and Speedwell Fire Department for rural development.
Those two departments want to standardize their air packs so that they match up with others that are using accounting. And Ms. Sweeney is pursuing a grant with those two departments to try to get some federal funds from rural development. So we would ask that you pass both resolutions, which simply say that you're going to abide by the terms of the grant if it's awarded.
Can we do them together or do we need to?
I don't see the reason why we cannot do them together.
You can take them together.
Entertaining a motion to approve the resolutions for Royal Retreat and Speedwell Fire Department.
Same.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horne. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Uh.
Uh.
Yeah.
Uh.
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 So approved. Anything else under new business?
One additional, Mr. Chairman, with Mike. We, as you all know, VDOT had their public hearing, our public input session last week on the Connector Road for Progress Park. They have asked for us to put together a letter of support and Mr. Hankins is drafting that letter of support. Basically, as you can see from the map, the, there were the three alternatives, the blue, the yellow, and the pink lines. The yellow is the preferred alternative. The blue shows the original lines or that had a conflict with the cemetery. The pink line to the south had a conflict with the solar farm that's under construction out there. So we would request that the board approve staff sending the letter in support of alternative alignment number three for the connector road.
Question. Is number three, is it just affecting farmland or is it going to affect any residents?
The, all of the, the only thing that's different on number three is here on the eastern, or excuse me, the western part of it over here, where that alternative splits there. All of them, when they come together, are following the same route from where they come together, back to the park. And there is one residential area that residents that is disturbed right there east of Lover's Lake.
Where is that at?
So all three doubts, all three options was going to impact that residence anywhere?
Yeah, that's what I was asking. It's not going, it's not going to impact anything that's not going to be impacted regardless.
This, this, this real life does not impact anything on, on that part of the grid.
I should have worked that. Why did they move that yellow line over in, over in that field more?
The, there was, they found a cemetery when they were doing their archaeological research and they found a cemetery. It shows in that little box right here and they had to avoid that cemetery.
Okay.
So are they taking that farmland to the, I guess it'd be the south?
They are working with the landowners there of whether they will be buying the entire remaining corridor or whether it will just be buying the right away through there in that process.
And you said the pink lines.
Pink line is not a viable option because it goes into the approved and designed solar system area there.
And what'd you say you needed action?
Uh, just for the board to approve a, a letter recommending alternative alignment number three.
Entertaining a motion to draft a letter in support of alternative alignment number three.
Same.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Any questions or further discussion?
Is that yellow split in the cemetery? Is it going right down the middle?
No, it's going to the northwest of it.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Yes, I have one. Alternative alignment number two impacts to approve solar farm project. Who's land is that?
The solar farm project? That is the Coyote Springs LLC is the owner of that land. Which is, it had him with the Crowgy family, Eric Crowgy and now with his son or whatever. But they, that is who has been developing that solar farm there over the last several years.
Is that, is that a, the same farmland that Spurger boys had?
Uh, no, it is not. I do not believe that.
Any other questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Uh.
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 No.
Uh.
So approved. Anything else for new business?
No.
Moving on to staff reports. Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Hankins?
You've got my written report in the, in the board packet. I'll just highlight a couple of things. We are still waiting on the VATTI application for broadband to be announced. We expect those within the next thirty days or so, certainly by the end of December. Even if our applications aren't accepted in this go-around, there is additional broadband funding in the Infrastructure and Jobs Act that Congress passed. The state is guaranteed to get at least a hundred million dollars more. It's likely going to be closer to two hundred million dollars additional. They were about four hundred million dollars short of serving everybody in this round of applications. So they're, they're going to get there. It's just a question of when. Hopefully, we get funded in this round and it becomes less of a question for us. And we do think that we've got some strength in our application with it being a regional, one of them being a regional application, the other being one that would serve a significant number of new customers in With County. So hopefully, we'll see some progress in the next thirty days and that gives us some clarity going forward on what we have to spend for other projects. We are still working on developing the comprehensive plan. Met with Lead Mines Rescue Squad and that work is going to start next week with the footers and the slab work starting. We expect the concrete work will be done by the middle of December and that they'll be actually putting up steel sometime soon after the new year, if not before. So they expect that to be around a five-to-six-month project and they expect to be done by late May. Or excuse me, by late April or early May. On the, the capital purchasing, the fire trucks, we got word today. The first pumper tanker, one designated for Ivanhoe, is expected to be delivered here next week. We'll, we'll do the post-delivery inspection and we're still waiting on a couple of things to be shipped in for that truck. But, you know, we, we expect that the others will follow. Although Jimmy intended to be here tonight and there's an emergency in Royal Retreat that he's responded to. So we've been going back and forth with the company that we're dealing with today, the low bidder on the project. They are experiencing some delays. They claim based on the supply chain issues, some, some things that aren't going to be completed on the timeframe we expected. So we're trying to get some clarification from them on that. We've told them that Speedwell has had to wait long enough for its truck and we expect it to be done sooner than later. So we'll, we'll continue to try to push that through and make sure that it gets done in a respectable timeframe. You've got the, the rest of my report. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have or if you have unrelated questions about other departments.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins? Thank you, sir. Mr. Bayer County Administrator, report.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. The couple of items. First, I would request that you all approve the preliminary engineering agreement for the wastewater treatment conveyance system with Pete and Boris. for the wastewater treatment conveyance system with Peden Boards.
Entertained a motion to approve the preliminary engineering agreement as, as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Next is a preliminary engine agreement for the wastewater treatment plant, uh, with Thrasher Engineering. And Zach is sitting in the audience, hoping that you all will approve that one also.
I thought I said...
No pressure, right?
Entertained a motion...
Oh, I have a good Thanksgiving.
Entertained a motion to approve the preliminary engine, engineering agreement for the wastewater treatment plant.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horney. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You can eat Thursday.
Um, and I put a, a few budget amendment requests in here. Um, we have a fifth Tuesday week next week, so that means that, uh, we're another three weeks out before our next board meeting. And, um, as long as the, there's no objection, if, if any of these you all want to kick back to the Budget Committee, we can certainly do so. Uh, but the first one's for Commonwealth Attorney's Office requesting an amendment and appropriate a hundred and seven dollars.
Entertained a motion to amend and appropriate a hundred and seven dollars to twenty-two oh one dash four six four zero one zero.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Next is a amendment of forty thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars for Speedwell Fire Department. We received a payment on this. The invoice had not been received in the last fiscal year. Uh, so requesting amendment thirty, the forty-six twenty-four for the Speedwell Fire Department. Thirty-two oh two five four six one two hundred.
Just to clarify, you said forty thousand.
I say forty thousand. I'm sorry. Four thousand, six hundred and twenty-four. Thank you.
Did you hear that?
Speedwell would like forty thousand, I know.
Entertained...
They would be happy to say that.
Entertained...
Dean doesn't set up his chair.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Notice Gene would like... Entertained a motion to amend and appropriate four thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars to thirty-two zero two five dash four six one two zero zero.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horney. Have a second by Mr. Cook. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Virginia Tech has contacted our finance department. They were going through their bills. Um, the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty, they did not re, had not requested their drawdown. Uh, we actually carried the money over into FY twenty-one, but we do not have any evidence that they ever requested that payment. We have confirmed that that payment was never made to them, and they are requesting a payment for that. So we would need to amend and appropriate, uh, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars to the eighty-three oh five, forty-three oh one fifty.
From two years ago.
Two years ago.
How, how do they operate?
We're all saying the same thing.
That, that's my question. How, how, how do they need local funding that bad that they didn't discover that they didn't request almost fourteen thousand dollars?
I understand.
Yeah. Entertained a motion to amend and appropriate thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety cents to eighty-three oh five dash four three zero one five zero.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
We, did, did we, we amended, oh, I mean, we all authorized some money for them next year, didn't we?
Yeah, this is from two years ago.
Years ago.
And they've got, they've got the, the receipts from two years ago?
Yeah, they, they bill, they usually send a billing quarterly for their expenditures for that, for the timeframe. And it's based on actual expenditures and reimbursement amounts. Um, and they submitted their, the receipts for this, um, I guess last week or two weeks ago, too, with, um, and staff did review. They had not requested it in two thousand and twenty. We carried it over, and they did not request it in twenty-one, so...
But this is, that, this was, the money was actually spent in twenty?
Yes.
It was, it was a budget, isn't it, in twenty?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, they never requested...
Virginia Tech spent that money. They just did not request our local share.
They, did they request their local share in twenty-one?
No. Well, I mean, they requested the first, second, and third, and fourth quarters of twenty-one. They, they never came and requested this amount from twenty that we show in our records. Um, you know, they, they, they say they sent it, lost it in the mail, whatever it was. We don't see that we ever received any requests from them for the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty. They did drawdown and request each quarter for twenty-one. They have requested their first quarter of twenty-two.
If it's approved, can we hold the check for two years?
It'll stay on date after six months.
Any other questions or discussion? I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this. Mr. Terry?
Both. Aye.
Aye. No.
Aye.
No.
Not approved. I will say that I brought this up last year during budget, looking at their board member salaries that worked for Virginia Tech. I'm sure there's somebody that gets paid in six digits that should've caught that.
Absolutely.
We will send the letter to them. All right, next item is Sheriff's Office Calendar Proceeds Transfer and Amend and Appropriate three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to thirty-one oh three dash four six one two six zero. Is that for the current calendar? It ain't two years ago, right? Entertained a motion to transfer and amend and appropriate.
So moved. Same.
I have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Obstain.
Obstain.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. So approved. Thank you for your timeliness, Chair. Anything else under County Administrator, report. Mr. Barrett?
No, sir, unless you all have any questions on anything.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Barrett? Mr. Farthing, County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I know what you wanna talk about.
There's a couple of things on the agenda. Uh, resolutions for the opioid settlement. The state of Virginia has worked with, I guess, the attorneys working, that has filed suit, um, against the drug companies for the opioid issues. Uh, there is a memorandum of understanding of the settlement with all the localities in the state of Virginia. And, uh, we have until January second to agree to sign on or reject that settlement. Um, the pool of money shrinks with the localities that do not get on board with the settlement. Um, the council we have hired to represent us in the opioid litigation recommends that we agree to the settlement with these four drug companies. Um, and recommends that, uh, the board adopt these two resolutions. One, which is to authorize either the administrator or the county attorney to execute documents for the settlement. And the second resolution is to, um, approve the memorandum of understanding for the settlement with these, uh, drug companies that are entered into the settlement. That still leaves some drug companies that are not participating in the settlement, uh, with particularly the two that are in bankruptcy. The Mollencraft, or however you say that name, and the Pfizer, uh, which are in bankruptcy right now. So there may be funds coming out of that, uh, towards the opioid settlements. Uh, and there's, um, some additional drug companies, and I don't know who they are, that are not participating in this settlement agreement that are still exposed. Uh, but, uh, I think they're smaller companies. I'm not sure what their risk is there, but, um, they did not get on board with the settlement. So I would go along with counsel that we have, uh, Mr. Barton, and recommend the board pass these two resolutions.
And I will say, um, what's the committee they put together, the, the state?
Opioid Commission.
The opioid commission. Yeah, they would buy up the money.
And I will say that, uh, I, I feel confident since Senator Peiyun's the chair, I think southwest Virginia will be represented fairly, and he'll, he'll fight to get our chunk of the cash, so...
There is, there is a formula that's based on how the locality is affected by the opioids. I'm not sure how they get that number, uh, through a variety of things. So, the rural counties that I'm aware of in southwest Virginia that seem to have a larger impact, uh, will get a larger percentage per, per rata for the, of the money.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution twenty, twenty-one dash thirty-six.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson, a second by, is that Mr. Cook? Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Open the floor for motion to approve Resolution twenty, twenty-one dash thirty-seven.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion about that? Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Anything else, Mr. Farthing?
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Next item on the agenda, Board Reports. First one's Water Committee.
Uh, the Water Committee met on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and makes the following recommendations. First is amending and appropriating twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars to line item four, four, zero, one, dash, four, six, zero, five, two, five for repairs to the Fort Chiswell Transmission System Pump Station.
Coming from committee, doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Aye.
The second is for staff to update existing PER with Peden Boards and to research funding options for the Route twenty-one, or Route twenty-one, Route fifty-two. Phase one sewer project, the phase one project has an estimated cost of one point six million.
Coming from committee, doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a few, few, a couple of comments. Number one, on page two ninety-six of your agenda, um, is a map, uh, that shows the different phases. Um, the yellow phase is basically the phase one, running from Fort Chiswell High School, uh, down to near the, um, Church of God, uh, down there on, on fifty-two. Uh, page two ninety-nine of your agenda, um, shows, uh, the, the phase one area as being the recommended alternative and the cost associated with that. Um, that's estimated at the one point five seven million. Um, then page three oh two of the agenda shows the, uh, three oh one of the agenda shows the, uh, estimated annual debt service of about seventy thousand dollars a year that would be associated, uh, with that project. And we will, we'll update that, review our current numbers, um, and, uh, review the, the recommendation for rate changes that they say may need to be, go into effect to help pay for, uh, the debt service for that project.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Barrett? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
So approved. Anything else from the Water Committee, Mr. Horney?
I believe that was it.
All right, moving on to Board Supervisors Reports. Mr. Smith?
Uh, the only, the only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank the Sheriff's Department and everybody. I know Tammy and I really appreciate the, the support here with your donations. So, it'll go to a good cause for a child graduating from Fort Chiswell High School, so, thank you.
Mr. Cook?
I have nothing, this time, sir.
Ms. Lawson?
Um, the only thing I'm working on right now, or the main thing I'm working on, is a dry hydrant on Rockdale Road. Mr. McCabe is helping me with that and Mr. Hankins, so we are, been working on that for a little bit, but we're getting there.
That big pond?
Well, we're not there yet.
We're, we're still trying to identify an appropriate site.
Yes. And that's all I have.
Mr. McRoberts?
Yes, uh, did you have any more to talk about the land in Lover's Lane?
Other than the one individual talked about, I've not had any additional conversation with anyone else.
I have been down there and looked at additional sites, but we, we don't have anything else picked out.
We're just gonna give a look on them.
I, I have been down there and looked at sites, Mr. McRoberts. Um, but we, we've got a couple of other things that we could look at, but we're not that far along with it yet.
Okay. That's all.
Mr. Horney?
I don't have anything at this time.
Mr. Terry? I think I have. Mr. Chairman, I just wanna wish everyone a happy, safe, and blessed Thanksgiving, and that's all I've got, sir.
Um, that's what I was gonna say, is hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving. Thanks to everybody that come out to the groundbreaking yesterday at, um, Lot twenty-four. Um, special thanks to David Manley and, um, John Matthews and Jessica. They've done a really good job, um, with a three-person team. Um, you know, sometimes we get accused of not getting everything right, but, you know, looking back at the past two years, it's eight hundred and seven million dollars in economic development investment, almost three thousand jobs. Um, thank everybody for your work in that. Besides that, we attended the VACO conference. It was not as good, I don't think, as in the past years, but, uh, we, we did make some contacts with some finance people and some other people, so it wasn't a, wasn't a total waste. Anything else, Mr. Barrett, before we go to the closed session?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, don't have anything else.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes, sir.
Entertained a motion to go in a closed session under two point two dash thirty-seven, eleven, eighty-one Personnel Matters.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session. Motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now back in open session. Mr. McRoberts, if you'll read the certification.
Resolution, certification, closed meeting, whereas the With County Board of Supervisors convenes a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative accord of voting in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and, whereas section two point two, thirty-seven, twelve of Code of Virginia, grows certification by the With County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which a certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. And I make a motion with...
Have a motion by Mr. McRoberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Vice Chair Lawson. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Uh, before we, uh, recess, the Apex Authority Joint Meeting, um, I know there's been some comments on which direction we wanna go there. Um, I, I believe what I'm hearing is our ideal of a joint meeting and their ideal of what we wanted to accomplish are two different things. Um, do you wanna move forward with the joint meeting in December or let them get some financial reports sent to us before the joint meeting and have it in early January?
Do you wanna, and, and I, I, I've spoken with, uh, that team since...
Do you want, and, and I, I, I spoke with that team, so number one, get the financial reports in order. Do you want to have a meeting and, and review the financial reports in December and then talk to Captain Turner later and we can vote, however you all want to decide.
When are we gonna allocate money?
You, um, they've not drawn down their second court. You've already allocated. Uh, December twenty-eighth, uh, will be when you all would be appropriating the third quarter allotment too. They can't, they can't request that money until after January first, and you all still have to approve payment of that check to them after that day. But December twenty-eighth is when you all would be, uh, approving third quarter allotment.
Can we pull theirs out and boil down it separate?
We, we, we definitely need the financial review.
Yeah, for sure. The financial review.
I mean, it seems like they're dancing around it.
For some reason.
I mean, that's just my opinion.
I feel the same way, Mr. Smith.
Well, I mean, they, they, they know that there was some opinions about the funding and, and maybe funding them for six months and seeing what they do, you know, post. I don't want to say post-COVID, post-shutdowns. But yet, we, we've not got anything.
And I, I will just say, their, their reason for requesting a postponement had nothing to do with finance and the financial reports. They just, when, when they talked about with what Jamie was working on and with, um, a few of the capital expenditures that they were talking about. I stressed to them, I said, do not come in front of the board. Number one, I said, number one, we gotta begin. Number two, number two, number one's gotta be your financial report on where you stand on your finances. Where are you right now? A lot, Matt and I were at the meeting with them and I said, you don't, if you got invoices in here. So, number two, emissions taxes have to be taken care of. Here's the ordinance. I've given it to you all. It's gotta be monthly unless you set up something and make an action and say, we will be paying these monthly, um, to, to get to events. And then I said, number three, if there is any capital improvement you want, I said, you need to at least be providing justification to this board of return on investments that's ongoing with. I said, you can put ten thousand dollars into some electrical upgrades here, or you can put two hundred thousand dollars into electrical upgrades here. I said, what can you justify that if you put this in, you get this many more shows or whatever? Would the RV sites you want, you could put five up here, you could put a hundred up here. You can spend five thousand or whatever, you can hundred, twenty thousand, two hundred, three hundred thousand. What's that one? And I said, those are the things that you need to have lined up to present to the board because this board is not just gonna approve any capital expenditures because of the way you need to have.
Yeah, and they, and, and that, that groups, uh, they should know that we need to see the financials before we even consider capital.
Exactly.
I requ, I requested it. I requested it from Jenna on November fourth, and I still have nothing.
No.
Nothing.
Wow.
So, do you all want to meet, um, the seventh? You want to meet after our meeting sometime in the week of the fourteenth or something other and have at least a financial review meeting with them?
Well, I mean, they, they, well, my opinion is they can send in the financial reports and you can distribute them. I don't, I mean, we need to.
I don't think we need to meet twice.
To wait till after our fourteenth meeting and see what we got from there and see if we send a recess meeting or a joint meeting.
Does that sound good?
I don't want that.
Um, anything else?
Just two things. One, we have the joint governing bodies meeting on Monday, which is not on your agenda to recess due to public access. The joint governing bodies meeting to have its own settlement, so we will be called to order at that meeting on Monday. Um, I don't know if I'm gonna pick someone to come on again. Josh Lewis is coming to give a report on Virginia, up to the Blackstone Alliance, and a lady from Bloom, the Hard Rock.
Yeah, Hard Rock.
Is coming, and her, she said she wants to talk to the board and other, she wants to talk about it. Matt and I will put together some, some project descriptions. It's been done different ways in the past. If you all want.
Chairman reads them all.
This time, the chairman have read them all. It's been time where you hand something out and Jamie talks about Project A and talk about Project B and whatever, or if you want staff to get any updates on anything, we can certainly do that. I wouldn't like Matt giving an update on Broadway, uh, just for everybody.
Well, we may want to introduce Matt.
They don't know him now, but.
Well, I mean, we. And just, just, just to make clarification, because we've had a little discussion up here, the joint meeting on Monday is at seven PM.
It's at the Whitfield Meeting Center?
At the Whitfield Meeting Center, and then there's a joint meeting with the school board here at six.
On six.
Okay.
So, do we just need to adjourn tonight and we recess?
We'll recess until Tuesday, this, this Saturday.
Okay.
Till Monday.
Tuesday, the third.
Oh.
So, but we're not having the meeting with the Apex Authority on the seventh. But you're gonna tell them that we want the financials.
I've already told them that, but I'll tell them if there's a new meeting, we can come and do that.
Entertain a motion to recess until Tuesday, November the thirtieth at six PM for a joint meeting with the With County School Board. Have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Terry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.